Good evening and welcome to the Facility Uses and Planting Subcommittee Meeting. It's being held at the George M. Rom Little Theater at Brockton High School, 470 Forest Ave. Today's date is November 1st, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. The agenda has been posted, and everybody, I think, has one. If we can do a roll call for quorum. Judy Sullivan?
Yeah.
Joyce Azak?
Here.
And Tim Sullivan, the chair, is here. We have a quorum. Item one. Discussion of school at West Cape Mall. Dr. Cobb, do you want to take that? Or is that the superintendent? The new school at the West Cape Mall? It was supposed to open?
Yeah, we're close to the person, the business, that has to move for us. Right now, we're using it for the parent liaisons. Janet Johnson Pluma meets with parents there for what she does for benefits. And right now, they're in the landlords in the process of moving out the tenant that's there, that the reason why we couldn't move the school there. So we're hoping, like, we're still on schedule, that they would be out by this month, November, and then we will then make the moves with the schools.
What's the, will the facilities take a tour of that building?
We can, yeah, we can take a look, yeah. Yeah, we can have Lisa schedule that with, anytime, we can set it up, just you can schedule it with Dr. Cobb, so people can do it on their own schedule at their convenience, so he don't have to, so anybody who wants to see it can just contact Jim directly, and he'll make, because everybody works different schedules, and so that way, instead of just saying, "Everybody meet at this time," we just have you call Jim, and either he or Ken will meet you there.
And I know Tony Rodriguez had a question about a fence being put around the entire park.
Yeah, I was waiting until we get the school there.
So that is going to happen?
Yeah.
Any, Ms. Azak?
So Superintendent, I know the delay was because the current tenants, they were waiting on them. Are they definitely moving out to allow us to be able to move in and be able to secure the property, do what we need to do to get our students over there?
Yeah, that's correct. That's a plan, but, you know, we, you know, it's still, we're leasing the space right now, so we can only do so much until we actually, you know, acquire the property. But that's a plan. We plan to put fencing and probably outside structures for students to use. Then we'll have the parking around the whole building.
So where it's November 1st, so are we projecting after January vacation?
I'm hoping sometime we could start getting it ready and moving people before that.
Oh, okay, okay. Good.
Did I hear what's being used already?
We're using it, yeah, parent liaisons, the bilingual parent liaisons are there, they meet with parents all the time. Janice Johnson Pluma meets with all the parents that she assists with SNAP benefits. Jimmy, you might know who else is up there.
We have some of the John Snell Grove people, the psychologists are over there.
Oh, yeah, there's the school psychologists are there, and also some teachers are teaching there virtually, that are teach at the Virtual Learning Academy. So we've used, we've used it a lot, actually.
What about the furniture? Is it?
We just brought our furniture, that's, so when the school moves there, we would move, obviously move all the furniture with them into the, into the building, because we have plenty of furniture.
Okay. Any questions on the new West Cape Mall school, our discussion, from anybody?
You know, just, just so you know, I'll be happy to arrange to walk through with you if you want to, but your FOB should work to get you in there. We, it's on our FOB system as well, so you go on your own during the daytime, you should be able to get in.
Oh, it has the FOB system already?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you want to.
But I'll be happy to walk through with you if you want to make an arrangement that way.
But feel free to visit anytime.
Might be better just to give a heads up, just so they know we're coming.
Yeah, we can just let Ken and Jim know.
Yep, no problem.
What, what are we taking there, the first and second floor on that back building?
Yep, right now, we have all the second floor, but we'll have the whole building eventually.
We'd like, yeah.
When they move out?
I think there's two empty spots on the first floor right now.
Right, there's two empty spots, which is actually like four rooms, kind of good-sized room, so, you know, that's.
So the goal would be the people that are upstairs would then move downstairs, because it's more set up for office space.
Right.
And then the school would go upstairs where it's set up as a school.
Any other questions, West Cape Mall School? Hearing none. Judy?
I was just wondering, is it the building across from, what is that, Ocean State Job Lot?
It's across, pretty closer to the IHOP that's there.
Next to the Dix, the old Dix up on the hill, it's up on the hill.
Oh, I thought it was that building across from.
It's Town Fair Tire, then, right, it's next, between Town Fair Tire and Harbor Freight, and then next is the old Dix.
Oh, next to Dix. On the right-hand side, if you're looking at that Dix, the old warehouse.
The old Dix, yep.
Okay, all right. I thought it was across from Ocean State Job Lot for some reason.
Oh, you mean up the hill a little bit more?
I was going to say, doesn't look like there's no upstairs to that.
Up towards Oak Street, no, that's a, oh, I don't know what's in there now, it used to be like a warehouse.
It's Tom McCants.
Yeah, it's got.
Used to be Tom McCants.
It's got docks on the side, so I don't know what's in there.
I think they might use it, it used to be a, it used to be a technology company in there.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
In fact, the last person that was there was Route 47, they make the hats.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah, the 47 Company was in there.
Yeah, they're right there, for the Red Sox.
Yeah.
All the teams. Any other questions, item one? Item two. Discussion of school playgrounds.
So Mr. Rodriguez brought this to my attention, and I'll let him explain. This is the ordinance from the city of Brockton that Tony sent me today, actually, he sent it a while ago, but we printed it out today, so you'd have it, which, the ordinance from the city that lays out the control of the playgrounds and the responsibility of the Parks Department and the separation with the school department.
Thank you, Mike. In doing some research, you know, with my, you know, advocacy of turf in certain locations of school-owned property, to address, you know, the use of facilities for our athletics program, there was a, I guess, back, I don't know how far back I can go, 70s or 80s, when the city was in the, in the, I don't know if Al the North or anybody else, it's been any longer, the school committee at the time, I guess the school department, all employees used to get the summer off, and they had vacation across the board. In researching the, the city ordinance with the Parks Department, after talking to the Parks Commissioner, Tim Carpenter, you know, requesting for ownership of the four Compass Middle Schools, which is southeast, west, and north, he brought it to my attention, just to go back and look at the city ordinance, which I did, which he stated he didn't have any control over those fields, it's actually the school committee. And the ordinance that's in front of you, that, you know, I emailed everybody last night, I guess back then, the school committee would vote during, you know, prior to the summer months, to hand control over to the Parks Department for maintenance and rentals, and then it comes back to us when school starts. So the ordinance clearly states that all fields that are adjacent to any school property is owned and maintained by the school department with the control of the school committee. I had conversations with Mike to see if we can go in front of the Parks Commission to do a formal, you know, meeting from the school department to the parks, you know, letting them know there's, there's an issue of them, you know, permitting the, those fields when it's actually under the school department's control. This is going beyond 20 years, and it's, it's kind of mind-boggling where the school department is, at this moment, going to the Parks Department to permit fields that we are in control of. So I think this issue needs to be addressed, so we can move forward with our plans on the facilities to move.
Just two questions, Mr. Rodriguez. One is, when you, when you say the Parks Department is permitting, they're getting money, they're getting paid for that as well?
Yes.
And the school department can't use it because somebody else is?
Yes.
Well, so there's a real problem there.
Yeah, so if you, if you take a chance to read the ordinance, there's actually 16 fields that the Parks Department is actually in control of, and if, you know, West Junior High, all the middle schools, they're not, Gilmore, there's a variety of those fields that they've been permitting, which they charge a fee for. And I'm not sure if, if we are getting a bill from the Parks Department, because the school department is permitting the field, I'm not sure if they're sending the city a bill, or they're sending us a bill for using that, so there needs to be some digging into that, but I think we should, you know, make, you know, take a vote tonight possible, or is it just a letter that we sent to the Parks Department explaining this, this issue, so they can, can stop?
What do you think, Dr. Cobb? A letter, or do we need a vote on this? I mean, it's clear as it can be on this, right?
Maybe read these, sorry to interrupt, maybe read it for those that are watching, so they know what the ordinance is.
Yeah, you want me to read it? Or you want to read it?
Actually, Tony, you want to read it?
The whole, you want me to read the whole ordinance?
Just, well, it's, it's not that big.
I would do the section.
15 dash, yeah, 15 hyphen 19.
Oh, section 15 dash 19, controlling use of school yards and school grounds. Control of the use of the school yards and school grounds should be entirely within the jurisdiction of the school committee, who shall determine the persons entitled to use the grounds and how the same shall be used. The school committee may, however, during vacation periods of the school, turn over the control of the use of designated school yards and school grounds to the Parks Commission, and it may turn over the control of the use of the designated portion of such grounds during school year to the Parks Commission. The release of jurisdictions provided by this section shall only be, shall only be accomplished if and when the Park Commission in writing applies for, and the school committee in writing authorizes the same. In the event of turnover jurisdiction, adjoining school buildings and the equipment of the school department shall only be used under such regulations as used as the school committee makes. And it, the section.
Right now, it's the opposite.
Yes.
So why, why is it the opposite if it says this?
I don't know, because it's just been the practice, like Tony said, for like the last, it's been, see, I've been here 30 years, it's, since I've been teaching, I taught physical at East, it was the same 30 years ago, so it's, it's, the ordinance hasn't been followed.
Oh, that isn't good.
Yeah.
It's an ordinance, and it's not followed, then we should look at it.
So it's just probably a mishap somewhere down the line back then. I'm going back to far as when John Dogan was the commissioner for the parks. And, you know, I used to rent out facilities, it was, you know, from this period, you come to the Parks Department to rent it, and from this period to that period, you go to the school department, and it was just like, who controls this field? You know, so it was just like a shared type of venue, but, you know, according to the ordinance, and also with Tim Carpenter, you know, with the ordinance, he was just like, "You guys control it." So, you know, I think we need to make a formal, I don't know if we're going to send a letter and explaining this to them in detail, I don't know if legal has to do that, or we ask to go to one of their license commission, Parks Commission meeting and address this issue.
I think what you might need to do is just send a letter to the city clerk and the city attorney, asking them, is there, was there ever a time that the school committee relinquished control indefinitely to that department, you know, maybe 40 years ago?
No, I would actually send the letter, citing the ordinance, and let them do the resource, research for, if this, if anybody ever relinquished control, I'd let them do the work. I mean, basically, we, I think we just stand on what the ordinance says, and let, let.
I think if that was the case, this ordinance would have changed when we, the school department at that time, did make that adjustment, or gave them control, or.
So just to see, understand, like, from what I gather here, we're trying to take back, basically, possession of all the schools, the fields and the playgrounds.
Those four, those four fields.
But as it is right now, you know, you're right, they, they permit it out to different organizations, and we use it for school functions, and we, we don't get charged, as far as I know, but the, the other side of that coin is, they do all the maintenance for all the fields right now, we do not. They have the staff to maintain that, and so that, we'll have to accommodate if we.
That's why we're going to have to talk to the Parks Commission, because some of that staff is going to have.
The expenses and the extra manpower, and to take those back, basically, and maintain them, you know, as well as then we'll have to acquire, you know, all the facility rental information and permit to ourselves, so, you know.
Dr. Cobb?
It'd be great to also, if we, if we are going to find out through the city clerk, whatever, what, I don't know what their fee structure is and what they're doing as far as rental, so we need to add the information as well.
Dr. Cobb, has it happened that, just say, for example, North Junior High wanted to use the fields and they couldn't, because it was already permitted to somebody else?
Yeah, that happens often. West, north, south, and east, there's, they, they rent out to adult soccer, softball, so we, when we're trying to book for like middle school football, it's hard to get, especially the four middle school fields, because they're booked by the Parks Department.
I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but I had a call, you, a couple of years ago, to get the grass cut at North Junior High for the side of Little League.
Yeah, and me and Mrs. Sullivan spent a lot of time on trying to get East cleaned up several times, and.
I've called the Parks Department of East as well several times, and that basketball court is well-used, and it's, it's often a mess, you know.
And we also spent a lot of time getting them to take the poles down at West, which were, became a danger for the old light poles, because one of them fell over in a windstorm, so we wanted to make sure we got them to get rid of those. So we're going to have to talk to them right at the board, and we have to talk to them about some of their staff, too, because we're going to need assistance, otherwise, we have to add people.
Exactly.
And equipment, we should be able to use their equipment as well.
Just, you know, it's not a money-making operation.
I know, but it's, it's, it'd be better.
Ms. Azak?
Run, and it would look good.
Because we, we have a scheduled frequency, we do all the buildings, the outside grounds and maintenance, and we, you know, they seem to kind of do it as needed, it seems like, it's not always a schedule.
Right.
Or when we call.
So, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is there, can we get a breakdown of how many times, who's renting the various compass schools? You know, we're here for the students, they should go to our schools first, and then secondary to those that want to rent it, you know, they're at our school, I hate to see, you know, someone at a compass school have to go rent somewhere else when that's where the students are going. Can we get a breakdown and just see, how often are they being rented, and then within the school, and then those that are outside of the school, the difference?
I can get that information from our system through Zalanda for out, when we rent it, and we, you know, or we rent it out, but this city would have.
We can get it from the city?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to, so Jamie Domestigo, every, Matt goes to the, the Parks Department and says, "We, this is our soccer season, now we added football, these are our seasons."
Right.
This is when we need to fill for practice, for games, so on and so forth, and that used to be the case. Also, it's the case with, when we used to have baseball and softball at those, we had, we would have to go through the Parks Department during the middle school sports seasons to, to basically book those fields.
So we have access to what's rented out through our facilities department, and if we can request what the city is renting out, so we can just see that, well, this is a field we need to focus on, it's, it's used, I mean, it's, it's, you know, a high-use area that, you know, that bumps them up to fields that we need to focus on, so if we could do that. Again, and then I support your recommendation that you just have to show them the ordinance, because if there was any changes, then there would have been more recent ordinances saying we relinquished, or some kind of an addendum to.
That would live in the clerk's office, so you're right, you send one to the clerk.
We could ask the clerk, if there are any amendments to that that we're not aware of, that, you know.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, there must have been some kind of a supplement over there, yeah, I mean, when we make changes to different things, we, we, it's noted, so again, you know, things happen, you know, thank you to Mr. Rodriguez, things happen, and people get into routines, and sometimes, you know, over time, things do just, you know.
It seems like this ordinance has got lost.
Yeah, things happen.
No, it's been, the only thing, like, you know, to, you know, also think about is, you know, in order myself, you know, I'm actually working with Matt Campbell, trying to grow our middle school athletics. These four schools are very important, that it, it's supposed to be under our, it is under our control, to come up with a plan to develop these four pieces of property as well, and if, you know, with the middle school sports right now, this, in season right now, you have football, boys and girls soccer, and then you have track, so you have three, four sports that are going on at these middle schools at this time, and, you know, I understand, I'm the Subcommittee for Athletics, where, you know, the A.D. also, you know, expressed, you know, his issues with scheduling, because we don't have the facilities to sustain the sports that we have, and it's juggling time, and that's what's happening right now with the middle school. And I don't believe, you know, dealing with facilities, that this, the facilities department even rents, everything just gets shuffled down to the Parks Department. And then on the staffing level, they only had four, I, I don't think they even had, you know, they added anyone, and you had a guy in his 70s, it probably, I think he's close in his 80s, they just retired, so I'm not even sure that the mayor's even funded the, that side of the Park Department to hire staff, and it's deplorable, they can't even cut the grass. I was at South a couple of weeks ago, at an event, and the grass was above the ankles, and you can't play football and that type of, and then if any members of this, right, this Subcommittee can actually take, you know, take a walk to those four middle schools, you can see how bad they are as well.
Would you feel better if we make a, somebody makes a motion that this gets done?
Yes, I'm going to, I'll make a motion, before we make the motion, are we gonna, do you want to, is it sending a letter to the city clerk and?
And the Parks Commission.
And the Parks Department, okay. Judy?
Judy?
Okay, I think, Mr. Rodriguez, I just think you should read the section before that, Powers and Duties Generally, too.
Which one?
Because it's on the first page, Powers and Duties Generally, because I think that says something, and then this comes after it. It's on the top of yours, I think. It says, section 15 dash 18.
Yeah?
Yeah, just read that section, too.
Oh, you want this to be the simple record?
It shall be the duty of.
If you want to read it, Judy, you can, you can read it.
Okay. It shall be the duty of the Park Commissioners, in addition to the duties conferred upon them by the general laws, to manage, direct, equip, and care for playgrounds placed under their supervision and control by the city council, including any buildings that may be erected thereon and in and upon the same, to promote and carry on recreational activities. The Park Commissioners shall have charge of the care, maintenance, and layout of the city's schoolyards and school grounds only as provided in section 15-19, and that was what Mr. Rodriguez just read. No layout of a schoolyard or a school ground shall be made by the Park Commissioners until the plan and design of the same has received the written approval of school committee. So that's important to go along with what you already read.
Thank you, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, because that kind of explains it further.
Yes, and then also for the record, for those that are watching, section 15-20, actually, on the playgrounds, under the jurisdiction of the commission, it lists, you know, every single playground in the city, 1 through 16, including the swimming pools.
Also, at East Middle School, we've had a lot of problems with overgrowth on the fence in the back, replacing the fences there for years, and we really didn't get any help from Parks, I mean, we did get a fence replaced, thank you to Superintendent Thomas on that, so we haven't, we've, we run a cleanup group there every year, we get a group of parents together, and the brand-new principal this year, Principal Spillane, that's her name, right, and she got staff members to help us, too, and we ran a cleanup there this year that had a lot more people involved, and we cut down a lot of brush on that fence, but I noticed Parks was there to cut it, but we kind of removed it, and then we wanted it sprayed after that, so it won't grow again, and those big, it's just like, this stuff grows everywhere.
Yeah, ruba.
They're like bamboo trees or something.
It's ruba.
I don't know where they come from, it's a weed or something, and it grows over near the calf over there.
Yeah.
Where we put in the tables back there now, which is great for the kids to go outside, and I don't know if they let them eat outside or not, but the kids could go outside there, I don't know when they do it, though, but the, the playground next to it is owned by a Cape Verdean church that bought the old East Side Improvement area.
Yes.
And that, and that is a lot of brush coming over into our area that they're not cleaning, so I don't know, that's, that would be city council, and it really, it broke down a fence there, and our facilities had to get the fence out of there, you know, they had to remove the fence, but all that brush just knocked the fence right down, and I said to Mr. Domestico that, "Don't even replace it, because that's just going to knock down another one of our fences, that's a waste of money," you know? I would just leave the brush there until, I don't know who's responsible, because it's on their property, really, you know? That's a real problem at East Middle School.
Tony, just wanted to say, nice job finding this, this is a nice piece of work.
Also, I'd just like to add, if we're going to send a letter to, you know, we need to also include in the letter the budget considerations, because they must have a budget that they, you know, have for that maintenance of the playgrounds, that we need to move over to the, you know, school side from the city side, if we're going to acquire, because we will have to purchase additional equipment, you know, additional staffing to maintain, so we need to request whatever their budget line item is for those, those playgrounds.
Agreed.
You want to make your motion, Tony?
Oh, I just want to, I have another question.
Go ahead, Judy.
So who cleans, like, East, who cleans all these playgrounds?
The city, right now, the city Parks Department, Recreation Department does, you know.
Okay, so we would have to clean it if we took control.
That's correct.
Mr. Rodriguez, we would have to clean it, so we would.
As well, I mean, I noticed that.
We would have to have the staff, and we would have to pay them.
Exactly.
To clean it, so this is going to involve us to spend money, so just so you keep that in mind.
Exactly, that's why I said we need to request that budget.
Well, don't we, because we'll have to look at, it's also the Schedule 19 cost,
because we get charged back by the Parks Department.
We get a slight charge, it's a small charge, like 20% of, of our own parks, but yes, we do have a little charge in there that we get.
You know, consider also that, you know, grounds are the one thing, we, we do have outside ground staff and some machinery, we'll have to probably purchase more, but if you're going to acquire three pools, that's, you know, right now, we have one pool, and we have one, you know, like, two people that maintain the pools.
The pools would not come under us.
Because he mentioned the pools.
No, the pools.
Not the three pools.
No, 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 no.
If you look at section 15-20, no, 15-20 actually lays out what exactly belongs to the Parks Department.
Yeah, I saw that, but he, I thought he mentioned the three, including the three pools that they have at the end.
Really only two pools now, there's no Caipala, they got to remove.
Yeah, I was wondering, were there Caipala pools, I don't remember, see, now, but, and, yeah, and then, of course, they didn't mention the manning pool here, but that's, that's part of the, the Parks Department.
And then, real quick, just on the east side, East Junior High, it'll be interesting if we can pull up the deed to actually read the meets and bounds, to see how much land that church actually owns with that field.
That would have to be city council.
I just have a hunch feeling that somewhere down the line, that that field is probably part of East Junior High, my, I'm just, I think that should be, yeah.
The same with, this got lost over the years.
That would be, Al, though, you'd have to talk to the assessors' office, because that was east side, I played Little League there, it was East Side Improvement.
Didn't we try to acquire one of the fields from them?
No, it's privately, it was owned privately by the Associate, East Side Improvement Association.
Right, if you go online and look up that area, it'll tell you who, it'll show you the lines of who owns what.
Yeah, but then, didn't the, then the, East Side Improvement sold it, I think, to the church?
Mm-hmm.
And they don't have a use for the field, so unfortunately, you're right, the fields just sit there unused, and there's three, there's three, I played farm, minor, and major league over there for East Side Improvement, those fields now just sit there. But I would be curious to see if those were a part of the purchase, so if we can look at the.
I'll look up the assessors' map.
Yeah, see if we, if those are falling, because then they would, they would still be under the East Side Association. be under the Eastside Association, but that was debunked, or whatever they call it, when they, when they end it.
Tony, you want to make your motion?
One more thing. Um, parks does pick up the trash at East, so if, then there's a lot of functions on the weekends and they do pick up the trash. I mean, sometimes you have to call, isn't that right, Dr. Cobbs, they do pick up the trash?
Yeah, they do, but sometimes we have to call them, especially after they have events there in the summer, the basketball tournament, and, you know, usually the weekends in the summer, it, it, that's a well-used basketball court out there.
Right, and so.
It's, the barrels are usually overflowing and.
We don't pick up the trash, they do.
We don't, this parks department does right now, because they go, well, once we, if we take over, we'll have to take, pick up those.
So we would have to pick up, and it's, it's a lot at East, because there's loads of functions around there, every weekend, and people play on those fields at night.
You have the park, the housing, you know, development over there across the street, so it's well-used.
If you go by there, it's not.
It's a mess.
Not a lot of, the kids use the basketball courts.
Yeah, the basketball courts.
It's most of the fields, the mess that's left behind are whoever they're renting to.
Right.
Then we would have control and say, if you're gonna leave the field that kind of a mess, we're not renting to you anymore.
Right.
So if we could just have in the motion that we could have like a, we could research how much it would cost us if we were to do this?
Judy, it's just gonna be a letter at first to.
Okay.
Yeah, then we'd have to review.
Get the info, request the information from the parks department.
We could request that, that we look into the cost of it, what would it cost us? How many staff members would retire, things like that? That's all part of the budget.
Would that be true?
Here's, I just wrote down, I don't know if you want to use this, the motion would be to send to the city clerk and the parks departments, the school committee, to take back control of the four Compass School fields.
I wouldn't say take back, I mean, it's in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Or take back control.
Stated in the ordinance, that's what I, I wouldn't even write.
Yeah, per, per the ordinance.
I would feel just say, as stated in the, as outlined in the ordinance. But it would be, the, the letter would be to the city clerk and the park commission.
Now, let's see if I can get this right in one shot.
Yeah, because we, we wouldn't want to approve it till we know what it's gonna cost us.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It's a letter, we're approving right now.
Right, right, I know, I'm talking about the whole thing, the whole thing, yeah.
I make a motion to authorize Superintendent Mike Thomas to send a letter to the city clerk, the parks commission, and the parks commissioner, um, a letter detailing the city ordinance with the usage of the four Compass Middle Schools, west, east, north, and south, and also requesting a line item of the budget cost that's allocated to those specific fields, if any is in place. That's, that's it.
Do you want to add ordinance, ordinance section fifteen eighteen, and fifteen nine dash nineteen?
Right, we can add that.
Yeah. Fifteen eighteen, fifteen nineteen?
Stating, uh, sections fifteen dash eighteen, fifteen dash nineteen, and also fifteen dash twenty, um, of this, uh, city ordinance with the parks department.
We need a second. A motion has been made and properly seconded, all in favor? By a show of hands. Motion carries unanimous. Item three, discussion of Shaw School.
So the Shaw School right now is an issue because it's, um, right now, the, the police and, uh, the police and fire, um, do not want to enter the building because it's.
Hazardous.
Can, yeah, hazardous, the floor, the asbestos, the lead paint. Um, and so we're trying to get the city, Al and I had conversation with the mayor and Troy about them using a demolition budget that they have, um, which they, is that budgeted every year?
It's budgeted every year, it's in the, um, public property department.
Yeah, so we've been trying to get the, ask them to, they take it down, um, because I would like to maintain, maintain control of the property. Um, but the issue is, we don't, as a school department, have, we wouldn't have the budget, it wouldn't allow us to pay for that, but it needs to come down, because the fear is that, as you know, in abandoned buildings, um, if someone gets in there, um, and decides to stay, something happens, then, you know, the, the issue is on us. So I just don't know, Aldo, how we, do we have to vote to give the building back to them? For them to demolish it, or can they?
We would have to give the control of the building back to the city, and then the city would decide what to do with it. So.
But then we could keep the field, the area? Because the whole place belongs to us.
But isn't the field a park, there's not?
Nobody, I don't know who does the field. I've never had one.
It belongs to the city, I looked at the assessors' map where they, that the field belonged, it's two lots really, it's, it's like three lots actually, but they all belong to the city, which is under the, you know, school jurisdiction right now, so. So, you know, I would say that we maintain the control of it, you know, just like, but, you know, maybe we just need a demolition budget, I don't know.
Yeah, I just, I just, the building has to come down, but I'd like to keep the location, because it actually would be a nice future location for either a small preschool building or office space, or.
A warehouse, we need a warehouse space.
Yeah, I mean, the field, because I remember back when Bill Carpenter took back some old, there was old schools, um, that he put on the market to sell, the Howard, the Whitman, there was a few others. And the Shaw, he wanted to put on the market to sell, and he was told that the law doesn't allow him to sell that, because the, the commu, community has to have so much green space and recreational space in a certain, with a certain amount of population. The Shaw School cannot be sold and developed, because that green space by law has to stay in place. So my only thing is, I want to keep control, but I need them to take the building down.
Right.
If it happens to somebody in there, that's the issue, is I got a email from the deputy chief saying that the building's unsafe. So I'm just trying, ask to discuss, where do we go from here? So to get the building taken down, but also protect us as far as liability.
Yes, no, I would just suggest that you ask the mayor if the city could raise the building or take it down, um, so that we can maintain the field and the property and use it for schoolchildren. We should leave it at that.
Because it's a great piece of property, I mean, you got old tennis courts that no one even knows are there. It goes to the left, probably about, I don't know, fifty or seventy-five yards to the left of the building, which is all overgrown tennis courts and an old playground. And then you go all the way back to Sterling Road.
Do we have?
Thank you, oh, sorry. Um, so the Shaw building, um, I agree, I, I always see cars parked over there, even though the place has been closed. Um, I'm just curious, does anyone know how big that lot is, or those lots? Because I, I know that goes far back. And where we are, um, is it, I always get Center Street mixed up, but where we are on Center, where we have the other Brockton School Building, was that Crescent?
Crescent.
Crescent?
Crescent.
I always get them mixed up. So, um, and that's just a few doors down. So if we could hold on to that actual lot, um, I mean, we could be growing BPS in that area, um, and have some stuff, and I, too bad it's not big enough for, for a bus depot. That would, that would be awesome. Um, but again, I, I agree, because I'm always seeing cars parked there, people walking around there, um, and that's been closed for quite some time.
And it would be a great piece of property for us to keep as a potential future, another pre-K center, if the state really moves forward with universal pre-K, because you would need, you would need more space, and that's a good, you know, part, you know, that way you could get another, a pre-K center in different sides of the city.
So you would be looking, um, to raise the building but retain, um?
We want, I don't want to give the.
Hand it over.
Or the, but it has to come down.
Okay. Is that, is that one of the buildings where if there is a fire, they won't go in? Okay. Because I know we have somewhere, if there is a fire, they, they just, for safety reasons, will not go in, and that's, that's even dangerous, too, to just have that burn. Um, but, okay, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Do we have a cost of what it, what it is to take it down?
I think at the time, when they were looking at it, it was probably, they were looking to do the Whitman School and the, and then they were looking at the Shaw, and they were gonna reach out to a contractor to get a price for both, because they thought maybe they could get a better price, but we never got a price.
I mean, um, obviously, it's a, you know, the building's deemed not safe. Um, I think, you know, we should make a request to the mayor, um, because they are gonna take down the old Keith, uh, maybe that could be.
Maybe that was mistaken, it was the Keith. We were hoping they would get a, like, a bundle price between the Keith and the Shaw.
Either we can go for the.
I can't remember the other building they were thinking about taking down.
They were looking at the Howard to take down, and even the Lincoln.
The Lincoln, yeah.
Because of mold issues, but, um, being, these prices change all depending on what's inside as far as hazardous, you know, waste goes, so.
But we could ask, we should make a formal request to have the building taken down.
Aldo, it was, uh, just about twenty years ago that the J. Edgar School was given to the Brockton Housing Authority by the school department. And if you remember, the J. Edgar School was only four rooms, and it, they wanted, uh, at that time, twenty years ago, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to tear it down.
What, what, what street was that on?
Times have changed.
It's across the street from Edgar's Playground, Winthrop Street.
Winthrop?
South, South Street. South Fuller.
So the housing authority couldn't afford to take it down either. But the, the BRA came in with the money, they paid for it to be torn down, and now there's twelve homes there.
Yeah, maybe we talk to the mayor about approaching them.
Well, the thing is, they want you, they want the land afterwards.
No, it, the, the whole thing came to the housing authority, but they paid to have it torn down.
But if you're gonna redevelop it for.
Right, what happens is.
Use for youth, I mean, that, isn't that?
Well, the BRA puts up the money to take the pro, the house, the property down, and they develop the homes and sell them, so.
But isn't part of redevelopment making sure they have proper school facilities along with parks?
But how do they get their money back if they build you a school?
But aren't they, I thought they were grants that they used to take.
They do have some grant money, but I think they look to self-sustain also.
In this, this case here, we need a letter again to turn this school over to the city?
I think we.
No, I think, you're not turning it over, I think you're just asking the city to take it down.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still a little.
Take a vote to ask the city to demolish it.
Can you use Harper money to, for that type of project?
I would think so.
No.
What is it?
Harper, he's asking if Harper can use.
There's about nineteen million left on the city side in Harper that the mayor's in control of.
I don't think you can use it to take the building down.
Judy?
But they have a bu, there's a budget for this.
I don't know how much they funded in it, but there was a, there was a budget in the public property. And going into each budget, you know, the, the building commissioner will say to the mayor, we got some buildings to take down, how much do we need to fund, and they'll put their money in there. So it could be one dollar, it could be a million dollars, all depends on what they funded in that line. Um, I have the budget book in my office, I can look it up tomorrow.
All right. But I think we need to.
Okay, so, I just had a couple of questions. So the Shaw School, that's on Quincy Street?
Correct.
Okay. And that's, I know we'll be using that for storage.
Yeah, we've pretty much cleared it out.
Okay, but.
Don't let the guys go in and out of there.
When a school closes, though, doesn't that property ever go back to the city?
Not necessarily. The school committee has to vote to give it back.
Oh, to give it back?
Yeah.
But I thought we were supposed to give it back if it closes?
Not, no, because we've kept the Shaw, because we've used it, the Shaw's been closed for probably fifteen years now.
Because we were using it for storage is why.
Yeah, they were, I think it's Head Start was the last thing that was in there.
Right.
So then when they left, it became, um, we've always had control of it, we've kept it to keep storage there.
Right, right. Okay, and then that new building, that's on Center Street, across from the hospital?
Yes, that's it, yeah.
And we, do we own that building, or?
No.
No.
We're hoping that the city will purchase it for us.
Oh, it hasn't been purchased yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Because I keep hearing rumors about something going on there, so I don't know what's true and what's not true.
There's P, we use it for PD, and there's, um, the early diagn, yeah, we've got.
Okay, so you're just like renting it right now? Renting, leasing?
No, 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 we use it for all, for school depart, we don't lease that at all.
Oh, you don't pay anything?
We're not allowed to lease it.
We don't pay anything?
No, we lease it ourselves.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we approve the lease, but we don't lease it to, we, we're not allowed to lease it to another.
Okay.
So we use it all for school department functions, PD, there's, um, Linda Cahill and her team moved over there, because they had to be displaced from the Keith School. Um, and then.
But the city doesn't own it yet?
No.
Oh, so you're leasing it from whoever previously owned it?
Yeah, from the LLC, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, and then, um, that's it, thank you.
One other question, are we heating that building, electricity? No?
What's that?
Are we heating the building?
The Shaw?
The Shaws?
No.
Electricity?
No, it's, no, we just, the, just for the outside lights, but, no, the inside, whatever they do, they run that antifreeze through the system, so, no, we haven't run heat there in.
All right, just wondering.
Years hasn't, the heat hasn't been on in there. I don't think it could run anymore anyway.
You want to make that motion, Tony, on this Shaw School to be turned back to the city?
No, to ask the city to demolish it.
To ask the city to demolish it, we keep the land.
Quick question, I, I, I mean, I drive, I drive there periodically, is it possible to get our grounds guys out there to clean out the whole property so I could actually go and see exactly how big that is? I mean, I don't know how overgrown it is, I know the front of it's kind of.
You could have them spend a Saturday there.
If they could clean that up and see, you know, walk the property and see how, how much space is visually there.
I think the last time I looked at it, at the assessors' office, I'd want to say between two, three acres of the property.
I think it's closer to three acres.
Include the field back there.
Goes all the way back to Sterling Road.
It's good-sized property.
Center City, my gym. Sorry, I put a little plug in there.
Ms. Isaac?
We, we couldn't fit the bus depot over there with three acres?
No.
That's pretty big.
And I don't think the neighbors would be very happy.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because I'm just thinking of where the, um, parking for Christos and stuff is, and.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of traffic. That's actually a very busy area anyways.
That could work, but we don't, that, that belonged to the, the, what is it, the?
It's, it's, the back is residential, so it'd be very difficult.
PCAM, yeah, the state, state owns it right now.
High thirty in the morning.
So we, we do need a motion?
Is this motion going to, to the city council, the mayor's office, or?
No, because he, they control that budget.
I'll make a motion to authorize superintendent of schools Michael P. Thomas to send a letter to the mayor requesting funds to demolish the Shaw School on Quincy Street.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded, the motion is to send a letter to the mayor requesting that the Shaw School be demolished.
Should we put in for safety reasons?
Yes, and, correct, for safety.
Yes, add safety reasons.
And that was properly seconded. All in favor, by a show of hands? Motion carries? Unanimous. Item four, discussion of Cochran Supply Company being used as warehouse space?
This is Aldo's agenda item.
This is Aldo's.
We still struggle for warehouse space. Um, you know, we have, uh, Forest, um, what's the address there?
Foster, ninety-one Foster.
Ninety-one Foster Street for warehouse space. We don't have room for ordering our chemicals, our paper, our supplies, to put them all in and get them in one spot, um, record storage. It's been years now that they said they're gonna develop and do something with the Cochran Building, and nothing's happened with it. We don't see anything on the, uh, horizon happening with it. We would like, at least for the unforeseeable future, if the city could, well, first, we'd like to evaluate the building, go in, see, there's a, there is a roof leak, go in and see what, uh, what's happening with the elevators, what's happening with the showroom area, which is the left-hand side of the building. Um, but if it is, uh, workable, we'd like to see if they would give us control of that building again, so that we can begin using it as our, I don't want to call it dead storage, but our storage of our, you know, our cleaning supplies, our chemicals, our, our equipment to go in that building, where it's city-owned and it's free, and we're currently paying rent in three different locations to store items right now.
Ms. Isaac?
Sorry, Mr. Sullivan. So I've had the pleasure of going over to that Cochran Building quite a few times, that's where they moved my, my, my donations from Crayons to Crayons. So it does need a little bit of work.
A little bit.
I, well, I'm trying to be nice on camera, so it does need work, which is concerning, but again, I agree, because we have so many containers holding our supplies because we don't have the space. We really need a huge storage facility. And, and I know anytime we get donations, I'm just.
Right.
Facilities is never has, they've never said no to me, but I know they're limited for space. And so all those containers that we're paying to rent or, or own in other locations.
Yeah, most of them we own, but we are still renting some.
Yeah, I mean, that just.
So.
Again, I heard there was going to be a rooftop restaurant or something.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
And I heard that went away, that plan went away. So again, we were, we've left that building probably five years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
We've spent a lot of money renting and it's been sitting empty, so.
Does that land across the street go with it as well?
Yes, there's land across the street, and the parking lot on the side is a city parking lot, but the land across the street's with it too.
So what, do you need a motion to?
Just a motion to have the superintendent send a request letter, saying the, the school committee would like to request the possibility of, of.
No, I, I don't think we send the letter, I think we ask the city to evaluate the building. You have to have an engineer and architect go in there and tell you exactly. I fear that it's very, it's not going to be cost-friendly, let me be honest. I've been in that, I was in that, I spent a lot of time in that building when I was director of operations. The large freight elevator doesn't work, there's asbestos in there.
No, there's no asbestos.
There's all this stuff, Mr. Petronio.
All right.
I've been in and out of there for years.
I spent very little time in there, very, very little time, and that place needs a lot of work.
I think it needs to be evaluated by engineers and I, I mean, I wouldn't touch, take, touch that building.
Wouldn't it make sense to raise that building and put, like, one of those metal buildings? Wouldn't that be cheaper than trying to fix something that's, doesn't have good bones?
I have no problem with that, if the city would want to do that.
And it'd probably look nicer too.
Yeah.
The building's like a bomb shelter, though.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So I was under the impression that the Cochran Building was sold to a developer, so it wasn't?
No, it was, it was, they had a purchase and sale back when we had to move out of there, when Bill Carpenter was still the, the mayor, they had a purchase and sale with, I think from a company out of New Bedford, or they were going to make restaurant space and.
Yeah, I know the Jeep Pub was going to rent the, the top floor.
Then it went into, it, it sat with the court for a while because there was an issue with the deed that was somehow never worked out, and then the company pulled, pulled out.
So Aldo, quick question, so if we do take this, so obviously, we're going to be paying the city side to lease the space?
No, no.
That's free.
Zero?
I would, I would request the building.
A second.
I'd request the funds to make sure the roof is watertight, and then to get in the space, and in the following year, ask for the freight elevator to be repaired. Again, the, the, the cost of a hundred fifty thousand for any one of those, the city would, would pay. But it's also a space that, my impression is, they're going to want to store items in there also. You know, we store some city stuff in our basements or our schools and whatnot, like voting equipment and whatnot, so it'd be something mutually beneficial to both of us.
So this motion is just a.
Request?
A request for.
To have the building evaluated by.
Yeah, who's the guy we use?
Sorry?
Who's the guy that we use to, that you, the guy, what's his name?
For the roof? Oh, Angelo, Angelo.
Angelo, I have Angelo take a visit.
So, Mr. Sullivan, you need a request?
Yes, for a motion.
So a motion requesting to have the city evaluate the Cochran Building, do a full evaluation for us to potentially move back to the Cochran Building for our storage space.
And we need a second?
Second.
A motion's been made and properly seconded, the motion is that we request evaluation of the Cochran Building so we can move back into it? By a show of hands, all in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Item five, discussion of BPS facilities rental agreement. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, so this is the facility rental agreement packet that we have. Things that have to be signed off on by the renter and all the regulations that we put in place. The, which I think the committee was interested was the, so the lawyers always update this information to make sure for liability. And then if you turn to, towards the back, it has the, the fee, that, the fees that voted on by the school committee and approved for, for us to charge. And these haven't changed and probably haven't been in front of the committee until, for a while now, so.
Mr. Sullivan? So. Given that we're running really close to our school committee meeting, can we request to have this moved to another meeting? Because I know I have quite a few questions and updates, rather than try to rush through this. This hasn't been updated in quite some time, that if we can just try to squeeze in another meeting before the end of the year, which will allow us to check with other surrounding schools to see what their rental fees are, to see if we're maybe, you know, see where we are with our rental fees.
Yeah, we can do that.
Again, we have a lot of updates that we need.
Yeah, and then we have to have another meeting before the end of the year anyway, because the Activius, Activitas is coming back to present the work they've done for the turf field behind, I gave you the draft of, it's not completed yet, because they have to meet with the Conservation Commission to see about setbacks and about when they're turfing a field back there, so they have that meeting to hap, that hap, that happens, I think it was either happening this week or next week, and then they'll come back with much more detailed plans about the fields behind the ACF, but they'll also have a rough draft, what you look at here will be the same draft that they'll have for the four middle school fields. So we, they have to come back to the facilities subcommittee before then it goes, then we have to go back to the city council, which they asked us to do, is present them the whole package of those four middle school fields in, so we need to have another meeting anyway, in short.
So if we, since we're all here, would it be okay, Mr. Sullivan, if we just go ahead? It's just, I know I have a lot of questions, and maybe we can get some of these questions answered before the next meeting? Because it's.
Mr., if we want to make a motion, just.
Yeah, I could have Jamie Damesco.
Just maybe review some of these, maybe we can create.
And give you outside, the, the surrounding towns and cities what they charge.
Okay, because I mean, just, just basically, like, some of these are talking about alcohol, drugs, weapons, I mean, we got to throw in, like, vapes and things like, like, we, we need to adapt it to 2022. So we need to just really go through and update this and, and update some of the info and, and again, maybe just add some wording on here, and also see what the surrounding schools and towns are charging, to see, are we competitive or are we undercharging ourselves?
So we just need a motion to move this?
Move it to a fut, future meeting.
To a future, not the table, just to move it.
Sure. A motion to move the facilities rental agreement to.
A later date.
A later date before, within 2022, preferably maybe our next school committee meeting before then. That's not till, like, mid-November?
We need a second as well?
I would have to check with Melinda and see if there's any other meetings, but yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to, we want to time it with when the company is done with all the renderings.
Okay.
Is the Keith Field also included in this? Because we're going to need that as well to present it to the council.
He has that. Yeah, he has that, they, the Keith, yeah, he has that.
Okay, a motion has been made and properly seconded. The motion is to move the discussion of Brockton Public Schools' facility rental agreement to a later date, will coincide with another meeting. By a show of hands, all in favor? Motion carries unanimous. We need a motion to adjourn, don't leave yet, Julie.
Motion to adjourn.
Any other business?
Oh, any other.
Any other business? We need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded to adjourn, all in favor? Motion carries unanimous.